Like to call to order Dauphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, July 2nd, 2025. We begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation for God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Now move on to public participation on agenda items only. So this is public participation for any of the agenda items before us for action today. Anyone interested in speaking in this time, there's a three-minute cap and we are being livestreamed. Anyone for public participation on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. We'll begin with the workshop legislative meeting minutes for June 11th, June 18th. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Salary Board meeting minutes for June 18th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Hagerty?
On Tuesday, July 1st, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding board appointments, insurance brokerage, public safety, contract negotiations, purchase or lease of real property.
Any questions of Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none. We'll move on to directors and guests. We'll begin with Salary Board, Cassie Roschinsky.
Morning, Cassie.
Morning.
The Salary Board packet is ready for your approval. The Personnel Packet has three revisions, item 10, 38, and 54, but they were communicated with the Board.
Make the motion to accept the Personnel Packet as you amended it.
Should we act on Salary Board first?
We should.
As it's before, just for the sake of order here.
I'll second the Salary Board.
I don't believe we have a motion for Salary.
So I'll make the motion for Salary Board Packet, Items A and B.
Motion made by Commissioner Hartwick for Salary Board. Motion seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion?
Just confirmation that these numbers fall within the budgeted amounts for 2025.
Yes.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Now I will remake my motion for the amended Personnel Packet.
Motion made for Personnel Packet. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion?
Yes, just verifying these numbers fall within the budgeted amounts for the 2025 budget.
Yes.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Davis, Budget and Finance.
Morning. I have no changes to the investment report that was sent out yesterday. There's also no changes to the purchase order packet that's ready for your vote.
Any questions of Mr. Davis?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase order packet as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Priest for the purchase order packet, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion?
Yes, just verifying that all these are, fall within the budgeted amounts for 2025.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Davis? Mr. Hagerty, Chief Clerk's Report.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have several items on today's agenda requiring Board action. We have five satisfaction pieces, amendment to a human services agreement, a new human services agreement, an amendment to a mental health autism developmental programs agreement, four adoption assistance agreements, children and youth extension letters, three items relating to gaming awards the Board previously issued in May, exercising a second six-month extension as part of drug and alcohol's existing one-year lease, a PCCD subgrant modification request, two engagement letters for legal services relating to personnel matters, two items relating to public safety, radio and communications infrastructure, a judicial tax sale agreement, a NeoGov software subscription for adult probation, our hazard mitigation plan, a parks and recreation agreement to replace the HVAC system at Wildwood Parks Old Line Nature Center, consulting services agreement for the Controller's Office, cyber insurance policy renewal, and a legal service agreement for the courts relating to a capital case. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Hagerty?
Yes, item number 17. Mr. Hagerty, could you give a definition on specifically where that's located?
One sec, I have a listen.
Drug and Alcohol's Lease Extension.
It's at 3815 Techport Drive, Harrisburg.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, as it says, lease extension for one year, it really is just the second part of us. So it's, we already extended it six months. This is the next six months. So this does not reflect a year from right now. It reflects an extension of six months.
Correct. Through July, or sorry, through January of 2026.
Any other questions of Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none. We'll move on to the Solicitor's Report. Mr. Owens?
Thank you, Commissioner. All matters requiring Board action have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitor's Office. There is one thing I want to correct. Number 20, the engagement letter for Margolis Adelstein. Our Chief Clerk said it was a personnel matter and I did not clarify for him, so it's my. But it's actually a piece of litigation, pro se tax litigation. So complaint, actually two complaints have filed and Margolis will defend the county on those cases.
Understood. Any questions of Mr. Owens?
Would just request that in the future, we could add that additional language on there. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to matters requiring Board action. We have items 1 through 31. Is there anything we need to pull for a separate vote? Not? I'll entertain a motion for items 1 through 31.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Former business, we have none. Any new business? Commissioners' discussion and actions. Commissioner Hartwick?
It, just three things. The first one is, today at 1 o'clock, we have a meeting that's set up with the healthcare consultant that did the analysis and review for the prison healthcare recommendations. As a part of our due diligence, as part of my due diligence, I think I was not a part of that review process. And in order for me to really determine a little bit more about the criteria that was used, sort of the FTEs, a number of the questions about operations and what we would be receiving, I'm going to interview that individual. I've asked both Eric Hagerty and Pence Pease to sit in with me today on those interviews to ensure that we're, you know, sharing information and educating ourselves. As you're aware, there was a team that was put together from the prison that did not include the Board of Commissioners, but we are now in the position to do that level of analysis and I could in good conscience come forward with a recommendation without understanding all of those sort of unanswered questions and sitting for review. And ultimately, I think based upon the level of answers that I received today, may even end up interviewing those individual companies that were a part of the process. So all of those things are important for me to be able to gather and ascertain my own sort of understanding of both process and why the recommendations were made in the way that they were in order to come together and make a fully informed decision on what my support would be for that particular item. The second piece is, put up a sign. I know Commissioner Douglas is the only one who's putting up signs, but I am putting up a sign today about keeping steel in Stilton, Pennsylvania.
That's a sign I can agree with.
The idea of a 159-year-old steel mill coming to an idling position is something that does not make me rest easy. It fills me with a desire to be able to collectively pull together a group to be able to do something about it, not just sit around and make projected discussions, but actually do something about it. And I was on the phone this morning having conversations with our legislative delegation, with the senators, and actually trying to line up a meeting next Saturday, or next Friday with the Intergovernmental Affairs Department from President Trump's office. Look, there are very few issues that exist in this era in which we can all agree. Instead of trying to talk about the hate and division that exists, we've got a responsibility to protect steel in this country. We've got a responsibility to protect the jobs that existed at Steel Mill. And whether you're Republican or Democrat, you have to come around the idea of figuring out a way to use whatever's in our authority to ensure that Stilton Steel Plant is not left lingering. They right now don't have a great corporate partner that's not communicating to them. So I want to send two messages today. Cleveland Cliffs, come to the table. Don't leave these steel workers hanging. They've got families. They've got responsibilities. They've got lives that they are full of uncertainty right now. In their eyes, there was major concern and fear and for good reason. And we need to ensure that both county-level services, whether it be SNAP benefits, whether it be our ability to understand unemployment compensation, whether it's our ability to connect people with county jobs, we need to do whatever we can now to provide assistance. But ultimately, I'm saying to also the administration, I saw Nippon Steel made a big purchase of steel here in Pittsburgh. I think this Stilton Steel Plant, knowing its history and having a little bit of involvement, is a very attractive facility for anybody that would like to run it for profit. The idea over the years that this mill, particularly in takeovers, have been used as a write-off, never really to be operated at its full operating capacity. They've seen it as a way to sort of meddle around, no pun intended, with ingots and specialty steel and, you know, they have a head hardening rail operation that is as worldwide competitiveness. And with less than $100 million in new investment, we could have potentially 100-meter rail which could compete worldwide. That's not a significant investment for a small mini-mill that has been reduced with legacy costs. They have some of the best damn workers anywhere in the country. And they have an organization and union that is willing and open to work. So the message is going to be clear. Two things. Cleveland Cliffs come to the table and Nippon Steel. If you are interested in purchasing US steel and you're interested in creating rails, Stilton Plant is up for sale. Obviously, it's not formally up for sale, but with a potential interest in a sale, that certainly could give leverage to current operations and ensuring that Cleveland Cliffs is at the table, not letting this folk, this place linger. The other part we're worried about is the canal and issues of flow. I know Durabond is also struggling because they have not been connected with electricity. So there's a lot of fallout to this that affect real people and real people's lives. So I just want to continue and you'll hear a reiterating theme from me here. What is it that we can do about it? How can we find partnerships? And in an era where there's division and people fighting and not much getting done, how can we bring together a bipartisan group of folks to focus on bringing investment, bringing incentives, and bringing and keeping steel in Pennsylvania and steel? And finally, I'd like to also highlight a location I've been out visiting and sort of reconnecting with partners out in the community. And this week, or last week, I attended a fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club, one that is a stable and a anchor within this community. And sometimes it's those partners that have been serving and doing this job, they don't get the kind of support because people assume they're doing great work. They're struggling financially. I know this Board made sure we gave in the previous years under the ARPA monies, dollars for a new bus, but they continue to struggle. And we know without mentors, without role models, and without safe spaces, these streets are not teaching the level of ability for kids to be able to reach their God-given potential. Because if we're not providing that safe environment, I know the streets will. And for, from my perspective, we should give our full support to the Boys and Girls Club. I know when I was the Mayor of Steel and we created a Boys and Girls Club, still know when I left to close down. Actually, Sierra Dent, the Mayor of Steel, was a product of that Boys and Girls Club. And you never know what seed you plant and what God has intended. And if you give the right opportunity, what kind of leaders can spring from the right level of oversight and opportunity? We focus on the crime, focus on the negativity. We want to report that. I'm really trying to sit here and focus a little bit more on ways that we can get involved instead of pointing fingers at our local Boys and Girls Club. They've got 20 employees. They serve 1,000 kids, 2,000 kids overall. They've got 100 kids there per day. They have an eight-month-a-year after-school program, which with after-school program called Power Hour. That Power Hour helps with reading competency and literacy and to ensure that the kids are focused on school even when school ends. They've got also an eight-week summer day camp. They're providing services like urban gardening, workforce training, esports, and all of you know they've got sports recreation. And they also have a summer learning loss program that some of you might not know about. You know, kids are struggling with reading levels and challenges within the school district. It's called the Brain Game that exists in their eight-week summer program that allows for kids to be able to focus on their academics. They get three meals a day, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And then they also get exposed to things like fishing, camping, trips for kids, recycle bicycles, a great partner. I know Commissioner Douglas just recently participated in the Green Belt Tour de Belt. 15 kids from the Boys and Girls Club participated in the Tour de Belt. So those are things that, you know, they're participating in and physical fitness and that level of safety. So they also have 20 staff members. And my call today is, for those of you who want to get involved in the community, don't forget about the Boys and Girls Club. They are a place where you can make a significant impact of kids' lives on a daily basis by getting engaged and volunteering. And my call today is for not, for us, our ability to invest and continue to invest both gaming monies and other things that we can, to support these anchors within our community. And then our community supporting these operations are critically important to their future success. So sorry about that. Just want to make sure. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. George, I echo your comments and thank you for the great work that you're doing with Cleveland Cliffs. I believe you have the full support of this Board moving forward on any initiatives that can help those folks there. A couple updates from myself. I want to first of all thank Solicitor Guy Benaventano for the work that he did on behalf of the Board, putting together the new MOU that we voted on last week with Visit Hershey-Harrisburg. And I want to thank my colleagues for the support of $1 billion in tourism to, again, go there and give the new leadership team under Sharon Meyer's an opportunity to work on behalf of the tourism industry here in the county. Secondly, went to the Dauphin County Area Agency on Aging's Annual Appreciation Picnic last week. Close to 200 senior volunteers there. I want to thank them and Ben Knox and his team for the great work that they're doing. Attended the Area Township People Movers Annual Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon in Hershey. There's close to 55 volunteers that provide transportation to our seniors in that area. And also attended the annual Harrisburg Scouting Breakfast in Harrisburg. Joe Robinson was the emcee, did a wonderful job there. And Senator John DeSanto and his wife Maria were honored for their service and commitment to the community during their lifetime. And just want to appreciate that and the work that they've done during the review, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Well, I certainly want to echo Commissioner Hartwick in keeping steel in Stilton. I unfortunately was on vacation during the press conference. Thank you for representing the Board there. And I'm hopeful about opportunities that might come from this struggle that we're in right now. And who knows what the future holds, but hopefully it is keeping steel in Stilton. I want to thank the staff and leadership here. Over the last few weeks, we've, we've got kind of a big board of accomplishments and things we're trying to get through. And I just want to acknowledge first, Mr. Hagerty's leadership in that. But last week, I think we knocked off three pretty big items that we've been, you know, working toward. And I just want to thank all the staff here on the fourth floor and even beyond who have contributed to accomplishing some of these, these goals that we have and getting all of us moving in the same direction. So thank you, Mr. Hagerty, for your leadership in that. And then also thanks everyone for, you know, buying into that because I think it's, it's starting to cascade a little bit, the sense of accomplishing some of these things and working together. And I've been thankful to see that. I know while I was gone, there was a lot of storms, a lot of rain. I just want to thank all the public works in each of the municipalities and public safety for what they accomplished during that time. I'm sure it was quite a bit. Yesterday, I drove back from Indiana and basically just followed the rain the whole time. It was great. And then brought it here with, brought it here with me. But when I got home, it was like a river in my front yard. I don't know if many of you have experienced a lot of that rain over the past week, but just want to thank everyone who responded to that. And then finally, Boys and Girls Club. It was interesting. When I was home, Boys and Girls Club drove by it a couple of times that I would play basketball in almost every day. So had a massive impact on my life. And I know for many people, it's community-based services like Boys and Girls Club and other places that have a massive impact and get people diverted into something far more positive to spend their time as their young person. And so we certainly need to continue to support those efforts in our community here and give people that outlet. We'll move on. Correspondence. The Chief Clerk's Office will receive correspondence, although there's none listed here today. We'll move on to public participation. This is open public participation, three minutes. We are being livestreamed. I have a list in front of me of two individuals. And then we will open it to the floor. I'll begin with Tom Connolly and then Gene Still is on deck. Mr. Connolly?
Good morning, Sheriff Tom Connolly, 3:45, Harrisburg Street.
Morning.
Swatara Township. I'm gonna, I'm gonna blow through some documents here, all from county records or public Facebook. I have campaign finance reports filed by Jack Garlacher, candidate in Swatara Township, all of his spending minimal, a couple thousand dollars, all done in advance of the election that was held on May 20th. I have a flyer that shows a thank you from two candidates for something that was put out in support of them. I have a list of 24-hour reports off of your website. 24-hour reports, $500 between May 5th and May 20th. You put in 20, 24-hour report. Hundreds of those have happened in the county and I'll congratulate Commissioner Hartwick for having the most of those and filing them properly from what I see. I came here before on the same subject and a letter was given to you on May 30th that said, I was informed by the Dauphin County Leadership Pact that the candidates were not notified of in-kind contributions. And that had to do with Michael Tuckey and Christine Zubek. I have, and there'd be an investigation. I have not had a response from either the Election Board, the three of you, Mr. Spackman, and I never heard from the DA for the investigation. I did my own investigation. This is on your website. These are the Election Board meetings. There were two this year. We talked about free and fair elections in both of those, May 28th, May 25th. The minutes haven't been updated since last year. I have no idea when the next Election Board meeting is. This is a flyer that was sent out on behalf of the same Dauphin County Democratic, Dauphin County Leadership Pact. On the 16th of May, on the 12th of May, post office doesn't deliver unless postage is paid. I checked with the post office. You can verify that. We have thank yous for those from Commissioner Tuckey and Zubek in the 24-hour reporting period, yet they filed no 24-hour report. In fact, they filed no report. They filed no report. And at the end of the campaign, exactly what I said was going to happen, they filed three contributions from the Swatara Republican Committee. I'm going to show you in a minute. The Swatara Republican Committee gave them more money than the Swatara Republican Committee has. And they didn't give it to them until June the 6th. The Dauphin County Republican Committee gave them money on 4-3 to get signs, never in the report that was due May 5th at all, never filed. And when I came here, and the same thing for Tuckey. So I'm gonna keep blowing through this here. We have the Swatara Township Republican Committee report that shows that they provided 2,500, over $2,500 in that May 5th period to these two candidates. They're only two candidates in, in Swatara Township. 2,554 they gave them. Those two never put it on a report. Interestingly enough, they gave them additional money in the next reporting period. And if you look at the report filed on your thing, they had $312. Was that the three minutes? Wow. Well, anyway, I'll, I'll just sum Wow, well, anyway, I'll just sum up this, elections aren't free and fair, I have an incredible list of violations and we asked Commissioner Chardo to look into it and I gave you all the copies and I'll vacate it. But this is extensive, it needs to be investigated, there's a person named Doug Richards who also handled Chardo's campaign to the tune of transferring $50,000 and then to a $50,000 report which you guys have.
Your three minutes is up.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll come back to the next committees, but I'd like to know when the next Election Board meeting is going to be scheduled. These are all violations, the county needs money and raise taxes if you fine the people to the max because the time period has passed. But the one thing that I just want to say, you guys didn't want to get involved, but you fined the Democratic Committee for being one day late. The Democratic Committee, all this Republican, no fines, not on time, not done. This, the Democratic Committee, was one day late and was fined here in Dauphin County. We do not have free and fair elections, needs to be investigated.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly, Mr. Stilt.
Thank you very much, Gene Stilt, Fisher Creek Valley. Just two things on related to Three Mile Island restart and obviously I represent the TMI restart. The word in Washington DC in the back rooms that I've been hearing is that the, under the Trump administration, there's a move to, if you will, lessen the, lessen the requirements in regard to plants and restart, et cetera. And what part of that is the lessening, lessening of the requirements for evacuation planning. So I just want to, I see the evacuation specialists in the back there for the County Safety Department, just want to put them on notice to watch out for any kind of lessening of public evacuation planning because there isn't, excuse me, there seems to be a push on to lessen that from the federal level for plants like Palisades Glen, Three Mile Island, to lessen that so there's not a, a bump in the road for restarting these plants. Secondly, you mentioned the Stilton Plant. At Three Mile Island, when you, when you try and do this okay, obviously there's requirements for, requirements for public participation in regard to evacuation planning. And also when you open a nuclear plant again, there's a certain element of risk there, okay? My whole plea and my whole thing is to eliminate that risk, any risk, by not reopening the plant, that's my whole purpose, alright? Right now, you're talking about a steel plant right there, a steel plant. By opening, re-three, by reopening Three Mile Island, alright? There's a risk put on, excuse, on the community, all the businesses from the major business at Hershey all the way down, not all the way down, but also equally to steel plants and other businesses, 10,000 businesses in the four or five county area that are also placed under, if you will, risk by the reopening of Three Mile Island. So on one hand, you don't reopen Three Mile Island, no risk. Over here, you open Three Mile Island, 10,000 businesses, you put risk on them, including places like the Steel Plant. Concerned about the Stilton Plant and all that, you have a, anything, any kind of accident just down river from the Steel, from the Steel, Steel Plant, there, there, there it goes, right there. So that's my point, that's all I have today. Thanks for listening to me for the past six months on this every Wednesday and I appreciate that, but we'll go from there, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Stilt. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick, we're adjourned.